Good morning. I now have to call the meeting, the organizational meeting of the Newport News School Board for Wednesday, July 1, 2020. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. My name is Dr. George Parker. I'm the superintendent of Newport News Public Schools and for the first portion of the organizational meeting I will facilitate. The purpose of this meeting is to approve organizational matters as required by the Code of Virginia. I have the pleasure of opening this organizational meeting because the term of the school board chairman expired on midnight of June 30. As customary, the superintendent opens and leads the meeting until the school board appoints a new chair. Before that, we will have the pledge and I also would like to welcome our new school board member, Mrs. Rebecca Amon, and our new student representative for the school board for 2021, Mr. Jordan Moody, a senior at Woodside High School. Good morning to you both. So now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Due to COVID-19, this morning, we are holding an electronic meeting to transact the business of the school board. In doing so, we are practicing social distancing in cooperation with the governor's orders. We are taking these steps to ensure the health and welfare of our staff, students, and the public. We would prefer to conduct our meetings face to face with an audience, but like so many of you, we understand the importance of doing all we can to flatten the curve of the coronavirus. Today, I am in the administrative building, administration building, and I am joined by our Mr. Douglas Brown, our school board member, a deputy city attorney, the school board clerk, and three staff members. School board members are connected virtually and the public will be able to see and hear them as we review and discuss school division business. The audience with individuals or public comment sections of our agenda has also temporarily changed. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via a web form, email, or voicemail up until 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. All comments will be provided by the school board and our minutes are made public. We are committed to conducting our meetings in an open manner and we will make every effort to ensure public input. We value and appreciate your partnership. So this morning, the first item on our organizational board agenda is the election of a board chairman for the 2020, the term of 2021 school year. Are there any nominations?
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Parker. Yeah, I would like to nominate Mr. Douglas Brown as the, to run for the chair and see Newport News Public School System.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are there any other nominations for their position of chairman of Newport News School Board? Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of chairman are closed. Mr. Douglas Brown has been nominated, has been recommended to serve for the 2021 school year as this board chairman. Is there any discussion regarding the nomination? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Amon.
Rebecca Amon, four.
And Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, four.
Motion carries, seven zero. Congratulations.
And good morning, and I'm happy to turn over the gavel this morning. Please congratulate our new board chairman, Mr. Douglas Brown. And it is now customary for the superintendent to turn over the meeting to the new, to the chairman, who will follow the same procedure for the election of the vice chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. At this time, the school board will elect a vice chairman for the 2021, 20 to 2021 school year. Now open the floor for any nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to make a nomination.
Yes, Ms. Best.
I'd like to nominate Marvin Harris for vice chair.
Marvin Harris has been nominated. Is there a second for that nomination? I will second that nomination. This is Brown. I'll second that nomination for vice chair. Are there any further nominations?
I would like to nominate myself for vice chair.
Ms. Searls Law has been nominated for vice chair as well as a second to that motion.
There's a second, Gary Hunter, second to that motion.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, time for discussion. Would either of the candidates for vice chair like to make any comments? All right. Hearing no further discussion, we will call the roll as follows. When we call the roll, please state your name and state the candidate that you are supporting in the, in the nomination for vice chair. So, Ms. Buffalo.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you can actually vote on someone who hasn't had a second nominee, didn't get a second.
So is that, is that correct, Ms. Buffalo, that you did not hear a second for both nominees?
Oh, no, you, actually, you seconded it.
Okay, all right. So we will, we will call the rolls follows. We will state your, state your name and state the candidate that you are supporting for vice chair. So, Ms. Buffalo, would you please call the woman ready?
Mr. Ely.
Lisa Searls Law.
Mr. Harris.
Marvin Harris, Marvin Harris.
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, Lisa Searls Law.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, Lisa Searls Law.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, Marvin Harris.
Mrs. Amon.
Rebecca Amon, Lisa Searls Law.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Douglas Brown, Marvin Harris.
Four for Mrs. Searls Law, three for Mr. Harris. Congratulations, Mrs. Searls Law.
All right. So congratulations, Ms. Searls Law has been selected as the 2021 school board vice chairman. Congratulations, Ms. Searls Law. All right. So we will continue with our business. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are nine items on the consent agenda for, for this meeting. The personnel report, minutes from the work session on June 16th, appointment of the clerk and deputy clerks of the board, appointment of agents and deputy agents of the school board, appointment of person to serve in the absence of the superintendent, reimbursement resolution for use of VPSA funding, impact aid authorization, 20 to 21 added vision student tuition, and 20 to 21 tuition rate for non-Virginia resident students. Do I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second for that motion?
Lisa Searls Law, a second.
Any discussion on the adoption of the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Buffalo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Amon.
Rebecca Amon, four.
Mr. Brown.
Douglas Brown, four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right. So moving forward, we have our action items, items 3.01, which is the school board meeting calendar for the upcoming year. Do I have a motion to adopt the school board meeting calendar for the upcoming year?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, Marvin Harris, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adopt the school calendar for the upcoming year.
All right. Is there a second for that motion?
Terry Best, a second.
All right. Dr. Parker, is there any reports or attachments that you'd like to discuss in regards to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make, have Mrs. Brooks have an opportunity to just speak to any additional items or, and also, Mrs. Buffalo, there were some adjustments to our July month due to the COVID-19 as well as reorganizational meeting movement of the board retreat that we normally have, have scheduled in October to another date. So, Mrs. Brooks, are there any other changes before the board takes action on this, on this recommended calendar?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the school board, and Dr. Parker. I would like to briefly highlight just a few of the dates on the school board's proposed meeting calendar for July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021. Just as a reminder, all of the school board's work sessions and regular monthly meetings are scheduled for the third Tuesday of each month and do not conflict with regular city council meetings with the exception of the budget hearing in March, which is required by the state code and is scheduled for the second Tuesday of that month. Now, there are, or next, there are a few additional meetings that Dr. Parker mentioned that I'd like to bring to your attention. The first meeting is on Monday, July 20th, when we will share our return to learn plan with you. Now, on Tuesday, August 4th, a board retreat is scheduled to discuss the work of the Student Discipline Task Force, the launch of our strategic plan, as well as any updates to our return to learn plan. I would also like to add that none of the monthly meetings conflict with board leadership development activities such as the Virginia School Boards Association's annual convention in November and the National School Boards Association Annual Conference in April. And as in the past, a special session will be held on the first Tuesday of June that will focus on personnel actions. So that concludes my overview this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Mr. Chairman, those were the items I wanted to make sure were, were clear and apparent for the board members, as well as if there are any additions to the calendar prior to taking action.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Is there any further discussion on the board calendar? Any questions or concerns?
The only concern I have is the Monday, July 20th. I believe that is the VSBA new board member virtual orientation. Not sure what the times are, but I could certainly join that later after our meeting if necessary.
We will have Mrs. Buffalo look at the date, the times for that. Right now, I'll work with the chairman to see what time we want to come online for that, for that meeting on the return to learn. It could be a morning meeting, it could be, it could be an evening meeting. If it's a preference of the board to stay away from that timeframe for the VSBA training, we'll be happy to do so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. So we'll, we'll all try to lock down our calendars for this board meet, for this board calendar meeting for the year. And with that, Ms. Buffalo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Amon.
Rebecca Amon, four.
And Mr. Brown.
Douglas Brown, four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right. Moving, moving right along, we have reports and under action, under, under reports item 4.01, this will serve as the required annual public announcement that copies of the division's policies, procedures manual are available to the public and employees in the library of each school, in each Newport News Public Library, and online on the policies and procedures website at www.nnschools.org/policies and on the NNPS Intranet. All right. Are there any other, Dr. Parker, are there any other concerns under item four reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're fine.
All right. So that will move us to item number five, audience with individuals. As was stated earlier at the top of the meeting, the school board has revised our public input procedures due to social distancing and large gathering restrictions. Citizens are encouraged to submit comments to the school board electronically or by phone. Visit our webpage, nnschools.org/board to access the web form, email address, and phone line, and your comments will be addressed accordingly. Are they, are there any items under item five to, we need to go back, okay, I'm here, we need to go back to four for a moment?
4.02.
Okay. 4.02 is the school board committee assignments. Are there, Dr. Parker, is there any comments in regards to 4.02 school board committee assignment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there was, Mrs. Buffalo, I believe the current committee assignments for the 1920 school year were sent out to the board. There was one revision, revision to that list of committees, which was the, the School Counseling Task Force, which will not necessarily be a mandatory board assignment moving forward, but that committee will continue to meet. We do have also in addition, with Journey 2025 launching off, we are asking for some board participation on any, on several planning and or assessment committees related to that strategic initiative. So with that being said, I believe all board members have received a list of committee assignments. Now, at this time, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate for board members to either volunteer to remain in their current assignment or to graciously bow, bow aside and let someone else take leadership over those responsibilities. But I would recommend at this time that board members look at that list and see if there are any changes to the committee assignments for the upcoming year.
Wonderful. And I do intend to follow up with board members on the action of committee assignments following this meeting.
Okay. So you, so that'll be, okay. Mrs. Buffalo, we'll, we'll only need to have that finalized list from the, from, from you, Mr. Chairman, once the board members have had an opportunity to weigh in on that.
Okay. So in regards to item 5.0, any presentations or discussions?
Moving to 4.03 and 4.04, Mr. Chairman, we do have two reports. These reports were born out of the conversations we had during the board's self-evaluation. One was to have an opportunity to look at, put our policies on a cyclical schedule. That was the board's interest to ensure that we are working annually to update our policy within a five-year cycle. We have a lot of policies to, to do. So that means Mrs. Brooks has, going to come to, come to us today, not only with, with some suggestions on that process, but also some upcoming policies that the board will see this year. So I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Brooks for her presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Thank you, Mrs. Price, for pulling up the presentation. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the school board, and Dr. Parker. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to provide a brief overview of some of the policies that the Policy Review Committee will begin work on this summer and through the school year. In several cases, we're still waiting on further details from the state. So these are merely overviews of what policies are to come. And so in addition to the policies, as Dr. Parker mentioned, that we plan to review in upcoming months, I will also share a timeline for reviewing the 11 policy chapters in the school board's policy manual. This morning, I'd like to share the policies that we will be reviewing in two groups. First are those that are required by new state and federal legislation, and as most of you are aware, we typically begin each policy year by revising current policies or developing new ones to ensure that we meet all of the new mandates. Second are the policies that we will be developing to support best practices in the school division, particularly as we begin the first year of our new strategic plan. Now to the first group of policies. As you will see, there are nine policies that result from new legislation, and they include topics ranging from student schoolwork during suspension to dress code equity to school meals. So I will briefly speak to each of them. The parent notification for return to intervention services mandate requires school divisions to notify parents if their student will undergo literacy and response to intervention screening for additional services and supports. So we will be adding this requirement to one of our existing policies. The new school safety drill legislation requires that our schools conduct a lockdown drill after the first 60 days of the school session, and this will be in addition to the two lockdown drills that are required after the first 20 days of the school year. Next is a policy requirement to ensure that suspended students are able to access and complete schoolwork during and after their suspension. So we will be adding this information to an existing policy in our chapter on students. In keeping with a new state mandate, we will develop a policy that requires teachers and other relevant full-time personnel to complete a mental health awareness training program by either a certified trainer or through an online module. Our goal is to train as many of our employee groups as possible, and our staff has already begun discussions on developing various training sessions. We are also required to ensure that our school division dress code follows the standards in the Dress Code Equity Act that reflects gender neutrality and also addresses religious and ethnic specific school attire. Now, although we are waiting on more detailed guidelines from the Virginia Department of Education, we have already begun to incorporate the requirements that were included in the actual legislation in our Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook that will be coming before you later this summer. The state is also providing guidelines for developing a new policy on the treatment of transgender students that will address a range of issues, including the school learning environment, bullying prevention, maintaining student records, participation in gender-specific school activities, and the use of school facilities. The state guidelines are slated to be completed by December of this year so that every school division can develop a policy to implement at the start of the 2020, 2021 school year. Next, we are revising our school admission policy to allow students who were in foster care when they turned 18 years old to stay in school up to the age of 22 to complete their graduation requirements as needed. We are also required to develop a policy on the identification and handling of symptoms that may lead to sudden cardiac arrest in our student athletes. The Board of Education is required to provide guidelines to school divisions, and we will incorporate those guidelines into our policy draft when we receive them. Last in this group of policies that are required by legislation is one that prohibits school employees from requiring a student who owes meal debt to throw the meal away after it was served to the student. And in our school division, where meals are provided to all students at no cost, the debt typically accrues from charging à la carte items. So although taking meals away from students is not a practice in our school division, we will still add this information to our current policies on school meals as required by law. The next group of policies that I'm sharing with you are not required by law, but actually work to support best practices in the school division. And there are three that I will talk about this morning. First is the development of an equity policy, which is being considered by our Student Discipline Task Force, and you will hear more about this at your retreat later this summer. We also have an equity approach strand that runs throughout the five goals of our strategic plan. So in this policy, we will define what equity means in the school division and how it will be considered when making decisions, in developing new programs, or in delivering services to our students and staff. The last two policies reflect two new programs that will be developed and implemented in coming months. The first is on program evaluation, which will commit the school division to using a systematic approach in evaluating new and existing instructional programs. The second policy is on new program proposal and approval, which will establish an approval process for any new instructional program prior to implementation. And you'll be hearing more about these two programs in the next presentation this morning from Dr. Megan Gerald, who will be leading that work. And the second part of my presentation is Dr. Parker Minton. I would like to share our plan for implementing the systematic review of our policy chapters, which is similar to that of most school divisions that review their chapters over a five-year period while continuing to develop or update policies that may be required by law each year. We've tried various timelines in the past and have learned to be cautious because trying to review the entire manual in just two to three years proved to be overly ambitious. But before talking about our timeline, I wanted to mention that our policy manual includes over 400 policies, and many of them also have implementing procedures and exhibits. So as we review each chapter, we will consider whether to delete or revise a policy if it's outdated due to changes in school division needs, resources, or technological innovations. In some cases, we may combine one policy with another if they're complementary. We may also modify a policy to align it with legislative changes or VSBA recommendations. We may, may maintain a policy if it is current and reflects best practices, or develop a new policy to support emerging school division needs, our strategic plan direction, or new opportunities that may evolve. And now to our timeline. Each of the 11 chapters has been placed on a five-year continuum based on their size, their relationship to other policy chapters, or they may have many policies that have not been reviewed in some time. For example, the chapters range in size from our largest chapters on instruction, human resources, and students with 66 to 82 policies, to our education agency relations chapter that only has six. You will also notice that the board governance chapter, which is during year five, and that's because most of the board-related policies result from legislative changes that we will be updating annually as they occur. Now, we also realize that this timeline will be fluid and that we will need to move chapters around given department leadership changes that may occur and other circumstances. But even though changes may occur, the chapter reviews will still be within the five-year timeline. And again, we will continue to update policies resulting from annual legislative changes in addition to the chapter reviews. So in terms of next steps, we will continue to develop and revise our policies to respond to our new strategic plan, to specific school division needs, and to state and federal mandates. And then moving forward to keep board members better informed about policies being reviewed, we ask that board members continue to direct their policy requests and questions to the superintendent. And while there may be only two board members on the policy committee, we will continue to update the flow chart on board docs of all policies coming before the committee and the status of a policies in the review process to keep the entire board informed. We will also notify the board when each update is posted. And as I just shared, we will also initiate the five-year rotation for reviewing our 11 policy chapters. So thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this morning about our upcoming policies for review, as well as our policy chapter review timeline. So at this time, I will be happy to answer your questions or to note your suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said, we're on item 4.03, remember, board members, are there any questions in regards to item 4.03, policy review timeline? All right. There, there being none, thank you as for that wonderful report and for outlining a process that's really going to keep us at pace and keep all of our policies up to date. So I thank, thank you for pulling that together. Item 4.04, that takes us to item 4.04, which is program evaluation presentation. Do we have a presentation for item 4.04?
I'll do an introduction quickly, Doc, Mr. Chairman.
At our board evaluation meeting, we, actually at our June meeting, we appoint, we appointed Dr. Gerald as the, as a new director in our accountability office. And she's today, what she will do is give a brief ten-minute, ten-minute or less introduction of her responsibilities as they pertain to the strategic plan and accountability and our, and her role as the new equity administrator for the school division. So Dr. Gerald has some information to share, and I'd like to get her started.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good morning, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Sorensen Law, board members, and Dr. Parker. I am Dr. Shimi Gerald, and I'm the proud, I'm honored to serve as the new Director of Equity Assessment and Strategic Operations for Newport News Public Schools. I would like to take the opportunity to first formally thank you for approving our strategic plan, Journey 2025, and this new position. Today, I will provide a brief overview of my role, how my work will support the strategic plan, and share information regarding program evaluation. Through though twenty, thirty, though Journey 2025 was recently presented, I would like to briefly overview the structure as a foundation for my work. Journey 2025 focuses on five strategic goals in the areas of student success, student and staff wellness, employee expertise, enhanced partnerships, and stewardship of resources. Each of the five goals was developed with an equitable approach, strategic support, and success measures that will ensure we are heading in the right direction. Our Newport News Profile of a Learner is embedded in our strategic plan and will have direct impact on the learning experiences of all N M P S students. Journey 2025 encapsulates my work, and I'm excited to start this journey with you today. The past six years, serving as the principal of Heritage High School, has been the most rewarding time in my career, but I believe the best is yet to come. In this new role, I am proud to lead the Department of Planning, Evaluation, Accountability, and Equity, where we will harness the power of our local and state accountability teams to move our work forward. These teams have done phenomenal work in ensuring that we have the data necessary to drive our decisions. As you may recall, Mr. Joseph Ellis provided the board with a noteworthy progress update on our goals earlier this year. And Mrs. Carrie Enoch recently provided you with the updates regarding emergency legislation related to graduation requirements that must be reflected in our policy. Their work would not be possible without the support of their amazing teams. This role will be transformational for Newport News Public Schools as we work together to energize and monitor our strategic plan. My role is more than a keeper of a document, cruncher of numbers, or evaluator. Much like my role at Heritage High School was more than academics and discipline. The lessons I've learned during my principalship have prepared me to challenge the status quo, ask the tough questions, collaborate across departments, and lead with a heart that is focused on providing students with the education they deserve. Our strategic plan and this new role will be transformational, much like the work over six years at Heritage. And there will be a marked difference in student learning outcomes five years from now. But what exactly will a strategic plan do for Newport News Public Schools? A strategic plan is a call to action that allows our division to remain focused and relevant in an ever-changing world. Our planning spans eight months and involves various stakeholder groups. Journey 2025 is intended to make Newport News better, stronger, and smarter and more equitable than when we started. In order to get to our goals, we must move from planning to doing. I will work across departments as the strategic plan champion to energize this work, ensure our goals are aligned with our practices, monitor the implementation of our strategic support, and assess the quality of our work through these strategic measures. In addition, I will provide consistent reporting. This work cannot be alone, done alone. We will work collaboratively in our division to connect every aspect of our work to our strategic plan. I am pleased to share with you our progress since board approval on June sixteenth. Our community relations team has been hard at work developing our branding and communication plan. We have also developed an internal Journey 2020, 2025 email address to communicate information to this plan work to our internal stakeholders. Our first email went out excited that board had approved this presentation. The summer leadership conference planning is underway and all things align with Journey 2025. In order to ensure this work is consistent, we must consistently monitor our implementation of the strategic supports to ensure they're done with fidelity. We've already begun thinking about how we will do this work and look forward to sharing further details with you in August. Evaluating our progress and programs are essential to continuous improvement. We are currently drafting policy for your consideration related to program evaluation to provide clear guidance on expectations for evaluating our work. And as we start to gear up to start our work, we plan to seek your input on the what and when of report progressing, of progress reporting for this plan. Program evaluation is also a part of my role and allows me to measure if we are doing what we say we are doing. Please take a moment to reflect on this quote from the United States Department of Education. We must ensure that all programs are meeting the diverse needs of our students and that our practices are the highest quality. My goal is to put a magnifying lens on our programs and initiatives to answer the questions of, are these activities effective for all students? Are they cost-effective for Newport News Public Schools? And are we really improving the quality of learning through our work? There are two types of evaluations that will be conducted. The first is formative, a formative evaluation, which examines the implementation process and outcomes in order to make decisions about mid-course adjustments, funding assistance, or professional learning needs that must be met. The second is a summative evaluation, which results from rigorous program monitoring to make outcome-related decisions about whether a program should be funded or whether program funding should be changed. When we assess program outcomes, we are able to make recommendations for improvement of practice, measurement of learning, and either to scale up or eliminate programs that are evidence-based. The term program evaluation can elicit negative responses, and our work will center on communicating what program evaluation truly is, our way of ensuring our work aligns with our vision. Newport News Public Schools students have access to programs that prepare them to be college, career, and citizen-ready. Evaluation of these programs will ensure we are providing the highest quality experience that is relevant and translates to measurable outcomes for students beyond graduation. Excuse me. Board Policy I L, Evaluation of Instructional Programs, was last revised on May seventeenth of two thousand. And I am sure we can all agree that a lot has changed in education over the past twenty years. Our team has researched best practices in program evaluation and the policies of our surrounding school divisions to begin the process of drafting recommendations for changes to our existing work. The recommendations will focus on a timeline and procedures for evaluation of existing programs and structures for approval of new programs. We will gather board feedback on program evaluation, create a yearly program evaluation schedule, and produce a systematic five-year evaluation cycle for all N M P S-funded program initiatives. We will also collaborate to develop procedures for new programs and program approvals to ensure all new programs that will be funded by N M P S have been thoroughly vetted for alignment. Now, with all of this, you may be wondering, where do we begin our work? Well, one of our recommendations would be to include the digital transformation. The digital transformation is one of our key initiatives to support Journey 2025 and our profile of a Newport News learner. This transformation is a fundamental shift in teaching, learning, and leadership through meaningful integration of technology, and we must ensure there is a measurable return on investment in this work. Or we could consider the Demby Aviation Academy. Our Demby Aviation Academy has become of special interest due to the recent relocation of the campus. Questions such as, should there be a curriculum revision? Do we need more community engagement? And is our program aligned with industry standards? Standards are all questions that can be addressed through program evaluation. As we begin our journey, we must also begin to refine our focus in, on equity in Newport News Public Schools. My role will also be to serve as the primary administrator for equity. On June eighteenth, twenty twenty, the Virginia Board of Education in partnership with the Virginia Superintendent, Dr. James Lang, published a joint statement reaffirming Virginia's commitment to equitable outcomes for all learners. Our support of this statement will be evidenced by the development of equity measures that support Journey 2025. Data on these measures will eventually lead to a public-facing equity dashboard that will serve as our evidence that great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools for all learners. Through supporting the goals of our strategic plan, supporting the Newport News Public Schools Profile of a Learner, and being a champion of transformational work, I will work to provide evidence that we are serving all students. Ensuring students have access to what they need, when they need it, in a high-quality instructional program can be challenging. But I am committed to working alongside every member of our N M P S family. We will do this work together. The Department of Planning, Evaluation, Accountability, and Equity is committed to quality implementation of Journey 2025 while ensuring our focus, our focus remains on equitable outcomes. If you have suggestions for programs or initiatives to be evaluated, please do not hesitate to reach out to my office, and I will be sure to discuss your recommendations with Dr. Parker. I look forward to seeing you in August, where we will be able to go into more detail about all of this exciting work. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions and note any suggestions you need.
All right, board members, any questions or comments at this time?
I just have a comment. I just want to say thank you, Dr. Gerald, for your time and getting quickly up to speed in that strategic plan. We look forward to future presentations and how we can assist with the alignment that you're looking at to realize that strategic plan. So thank you very much today.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much, Dr. Gerald. That was a fantastic report. It's great to have your position identified and to have a position of program evaluation. It's a wonderful, I think, best practice that's really going to help move us forward. I'll just speak briefly on the work that the V S B A is doing in regards to the task force for students in challenging environments. Your position was one of the positions that we, that my subcommittee put, put forward as a best practice within school divisions for program evaluation, and we'll see if that makes it all the way through to the state level report. So that's just, you know, hats off to the administration of staff for having the foresight for having an accountability position that's focused on equity. So in a time like this, it's really very much needed and very welcome. All right, so that will move us to item four point oh five, comments by the superintendent. Dr. Parker, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity and congratulations on your, on your appointment as the chair for the upcoming school year. I think this, the board will find, be very pleased to find that this position and working with Dr. Gerald will allow the board to be, really be intimately involved, more intimately involved with the work of the strategic plan. And I think it'll be an exciting time for this entire division as we look at a transformational plan that will, will direct us over the next five-year period. So good things coming down the line with, with, with Journey 2025. My remarks this morning, I'll first speak about our Spark Summer, Summer Program because we're, we're just about ramping up and getting underway. Spark, the Summer Program for Arts, Recreation, and Knowledge began this week. The first session of our high school program for credit recovery and credit advancements started on Monday. About two, six hundred and fifty students are participating in our virtual program with teacher support. Registration for sessions two is in progress. Next week, our elementary and middle school Spark program begins. Our elementary students will participate in at-home learning. They will receive reading materials in a special summer adventure bookbag. We are offering two virtual programs at the middle school level to support students with remediation and incomplete grades from the last quarter. We are also offering four virtual STEM summer camps throughout July. Middle school students can register for engineering camp, robotics camp, coding camp, or cybersecurity camp. Registration for these free camps are underway. To support virtual learning, students in need of Chromebooks and internet, and internet hotspots may check out these devices for, for our summer programs. Over the next few weeks, we expect to serve over thirty-five hundred students through summer Spark programs. And as you're aware, we're continuing with our summer feed programs as well around the city. Newport News Public Schools has earned six Virginia Board of Education Exemplar Performance School Awards for high student achievement, continuous improvement, and innovative practices. We were awarded a Board of Education Innovative Practice Award for our integrated STEM approach to learning through the engineering design challenges. The challenges co-hosted by a local business or industry partner presents a task that requires students' teams to work together to devise a solution. Newport News Public Schools was one of only six divisions selected to receive this award. And we are happy to report that our engineering design challenges are now happening at every level, high, middle, high school, middle school, and elementary school in Newport News. Deer Park and General Stanford Elementary Schools received the Virginia Board of Education Highest Achievement Award for the second year in a row for academic achievement and success in narrowing achievement gaps. Demby High School, Discovery STEM Academy, and Marshall Early Learning Centers earned the Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award for increasing academic performance and decreasing chronic absenteeism in the high school dropout rate. Congratulations to our STEM team and the students, families, and staff at these wonderful schools. Again, Deer Park, General Stanford, Demby High School, Discovery STEM Academy, and Marshall Early Learning Center. Additionally, Newport News Public Schools partnership with Bayport Federal Credit Union has earned the Virginia Department of Education State Business and Industry Partnership Award. Our collaboration to enhance financial education is named the winner of the 2020 Creating Excellence Business Partnership Award. We have Bayport student-run credit unions in ten of our schools. This partnership offers our students lessons in financial literacy and work-based learning opportunities. In fact, some of our student tellers have been hired for full-time positions at Bayport. Special thanks to Bayport Federal Credit Union for their continued support. Mr. Chairman, we may bring some of these folks in maybe at the, at the August meeting so we can formally recognize them at our next official board meeting. But congratulations to all. And the final words I'd like to put out to our community is that we are working very hard right now to bring, to finalize our fall, our planning for the fall return to learn for students. You may, welcome to tune in on July twentieth as we present more detail about our fall plans as well as the communications that are, will be forthcoming. If you want input into that process, please complete the surveys that have gone out to our community, staff, and families regarding our return to learn planning. Your input will be strongly considered as we finalize our plans. So please complete the survey, and, and tune in later this month as we unveil our planning for the fall. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my, my comments.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dr. Parker. So that does now move us to item five point O, audience with individuals and groups. And so now at this time, under item five point O, as was stated earlier, the school board has revised our public input procedures. Due to social distancing and large gathering restrictions, citizens are encouraged to submit comments to the school board electronically or by phone. Visit our webpage at nnschools.org forward slash board to access the web form, email address, and phone line in order to contact the board and have an audience with the board. Thank you. So with that, we will, we will now, now move it to item number six, matters by the school board. And so with that, Rebecca, Amy, we'll start with you first. Any, any comments?
I just want to say that I am excited to be a part of this group and to be representing the, the central district of Newport News. I am from here originally. As many of you may know, I attended what was Dumber Irwin for middle school and then moved on to Ferguson High School where I graduated from. Went away for school and worked a bit up in the DC area as well before my husband and I came back down here. So, and my, my boys are at Riverside and Gildersley. So very excited to watch them go through the school system and very excited to be a part of this group and work with the board and Dr. Parker and Mrs. Buffalo and everyone to, for a great year ahead. I think we've got a lot of exciting opportunities.
Thank you. Dr. Best?
Yes, I just have a couple of comments. I would like to congratulate you, our new chairperson, and also a congratulations to Ms. Sorensen Law, Vice Chair. Welcome aboard, Ms. Almond, to the school board, and also to Mr. Jordan Moody. I definitely look forward to working with you. I encourage all parents, school employees, please complete the survey so that we can hear your voices. It's very, very important. So spread the word. Please complete the survey. As soon as I received it, I am. As soon as I received it, I am a procrastinator. I said, this is very, very important. I need to speak up as a parent as well as a board member. And then finally, I'd just like to, once again, thank all the employees, Newport News Public Schools, for your continued dedication and hard work as we navigate these uncharted territories known as a pandemic. So thank you for your hard work and just try to take a minute to safely enjoy your summer.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Best. Mr. Ely, any comments today? And, Mr. Ely, understand, oh, wonderful.
I just wanted to say, congratulations, Douglas, on your, being the chair. I knew you'd do a great job. And congratulate Lisa, and congratulate Ms. Amon for joining the board and our new school board, youth representative. Congratulations. That's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ely. And thank you for, for battling through to be with us today. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on the reelection of Lisa, and also to your election as the chairman, Ms. Rebecca Amon. Welcome to the school board. Looking forward to working with you. And Mr. J.D. Moody, congratulations to you for being elected as our student representative. You have a lot of shoes to fill from your predecessors. They've all done a wonderful job, and I'm sure you would do the same. Also, ensure that everyone do that survey. You know, last time we did a major survey was prior to Dr. Parker getting here. So I think parents and individuals can know that we actually looked at that survey and use it as recommendations. I just want to, we have a new board, and I just want to make sure that, you know, sometimes we have, we're all going to have hard discussions, and it is best to have those discussions early, early and often, and also honestly. When you're forming a team and moving forward to, to help this school division move forward, you have to be able to look to your left and look to your right, and to ensure that you understand completely where individuals are coming from. That is the only way you can move forward and be successful. And at the end of the day, it is about making our children successful, making this organization, school division, successful. But it starts with team building with the individuals that were elected to serve this city. So I just, of a school division. So I just hope that we're able to have a honest, open dialogue and discussions to move this school division forward. Thank you, Ms.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Chairman, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, you first, on your appointment to the chair. I know you will continue to advance the school division forward. I look forward to your leadership. Again, congratulations to Ms. Searls Laws on your reappointment as the vice chair to the vice chair position. I'm confident that your leadership and supporting the vision, the mission of the school division will be fruitful. Congratulations to our newest school board member, Ms. Rebecca Amon. How are you doing? I think, I know, I'm looking forward to all your input, your suggestions. I'm confident that you have a lot to contribute for the advancement of our school division. And lastly, but not least, to our, welcome to our new school student representative, Mr. Jordan Moody. Congratulations, as Mr. Harris says, you have some big shoes to fill, but I know that you're up to the challenge. This is my sixth year on the board, starting my seventh. We've had one dynamic student after another, and I'm certain that you will fulfill your duties and, again, leave a path of your own for people to follow. That said, I want everyone to have a safe and productive but happy summer. And so as a student chair, if you're looking, please, please, please go out and read a book, a comic book, a funny book, a newspaper, a magazine, anything. Just go out and read something, read the instructions of how to put something together. We just need our students to go out and read. And, again, be safe out there in this COVID time, and we look forward to a prosperous new, new school year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Okay, Vice Chair Searls Law?
Thank you, Chairman. First, I want to thank Tracy Brooks. I, once again, you can't always get that spacebar to work or to get off mute. So I wanted to let her know how much I really appreciate her dedication to the policy committee and taking on the challenge to update all of our policy and to come out with guidelines to do so. So thank you very much, and thank you for keeping us aware of that progress. And then, welcome to Rebecca Amon. We're really excited to have you on the board, to have you do the work that we enjoy doing, and I look forward to working with you. And for Jordan, Jordan Moody, so the many times I've passed you in the hallway at Woodside High School, I know you're up for the challenge. Just seeing how you stepped in at graduation and made sure everyone got across that stage, that they were looking forward for their picture, and just feeling supported by someone at their school. That's what it's about. So it's a joy to have you working alongside with us this school year. And congratulations, Mr. Brown. I know that it's going to be a joy working with you. I intend to serve by keeping the board informed, involved, and engaged by working closely with you. I look forward to supporting Dr. Parker and his administration to meet the needs of our students and to support our teachers, and that's our goal. And I'm really looking forward to this team, as Mr. Harris said, getting together and being able to do that with finesse. And then, yes, please, fill out that survey. I've had a couple of families reach out and ask about the survey, question how it's going to be used. There is no, there is no ill intent with the survey. It is just exactly what it is face value. We need to know that information. So if you would please fill the survey out so that we have all of the information to make informed decisions, we greatly, greatly appreciate that. So back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. And most importantly, Mr. Moody, representing Woodside and the students of the, of Newport News, please introductory comments from yourself?
Well, good morning, Dr. Parker, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Vice Chair, the entirety of the NMPS school board, as well as the NMPS students, staff, and families. Please allow for me a personal point of privilege to express my sincere excitement to have the opportunity to represent the 28,000 students whom attend Newport News Public Schools. I look forward to working alongside the school board to ensure Newport News Public Schools continues to be college career and citizen-ready. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Great. And so wonderful to have you joining us. We're looking forward to a very productive year. So at this time, I'll, I'll just comment that I thank the board for placing their confidence in me. This, we, we know that this is a challenging time that we are going through with the coronavirus and its impact that it's had on our local community and it's going to have on education going forward. But I'll point us back to the graduation, which went off really brilliantly and beautifully. My family couldn't have been any happier in terms of our own experiences with graduation, and I've heard very similar things from, from other families in the community. So I'll just remind us all that we effectively work through that process, and I believe that we will be very effective in our school reopening as well, following those same lessons learned and that template that we had going forward into graduation. So just as was mentioned, that was one of the things that we did leading into graduation was we did surveys and, and looked at what the students were feeling about graduation, what parents were, how they were concerned, and how the administration was concerned, and how the, the staff were concerned. And so we're doing a very similar approach here with the opening of the schools, and that's why it's so very important for you to go online. I believe July 3rd is the deadline to complete the survey. So please go to nnschools.org, and it should be fairly prominent on our homepage where you can find that link to take the survey. And please complete the survey. Do it today, you know, no time like the present to do that. And please trust and be assured, just like with graduation, your comments are really integral to our opening plans. And we can, I think everyone here can attest to how much we did adjust and change it in accordance with public input and feedback that we did receive through the, the graduation process. And, you know, I believe we'll carry those same kinds of best practices forward in regards to our, our school opening. So I know that that's on the foremost and forefront of people's minds, and so I want to rest assured that the board is looking at all the, the possible options, and we're going to be doing a very deep dive into the topic of reopening on July the 20th. And folks are welcome to join us and tune in and hear some of those discussions live. So looking forward to that and looking forward to an outstanding year. To my predecessor, Mr. Hunter, I want to thank you for the mentorship and support that you've provided. You have, I was reflecting on, you've got a lot, a lot of trust for me. Both of my children have your signature on their diplomas. And so reflecting on the, the impact of a, of a chairman, I don't take this job lightly, and I, and I know that you have carried it with dignity and taken the, the matters very seriously as well. And so I hope to continue the great work that, that you have done, as we say, on the shoulders of, of giants. And so as well, to my, to my Vice Chairman, Ms. Searls Law, I'm going to, we're going to be working together, and I want to tag you right now, as I, as I wrap up, if you grab the motion for closed session, because that is where we're going to be going to next. And I, I do believe that we do have a matter to attend to in, in regards to closed session. So I am going to move us forward to item number seven, closed meeting. And a closed meeting may be held in accordance with the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A subsection 1 of the Code of Virginia in regards to personnel matters. And I believe that we do have a reason to have a motion today, and so I would ask, is there a motion?
Yes, there is a motion, Mr. Chairman. A motion for the school board to convene a closed meeting pursuant to section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia subsection 1 for the purpose of considering prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, or promotion, and discussing the performance of a specific public officer.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I second that. Gary Hunter, second.
The motion has been presented by Vice Chair Law, and I believe seconded by Mr. Hunter. All right, with Ms. Buffalo, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, there being no discussion, would you please call the roll, Ms. Buffalo?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law? Dr. Best?
Jerry Best, four.
Mrs. Amon?
Rebecca Amon, four.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, four.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you. And so with that motion, I believe that we will adjourn this current organizational meeting for now, and we will move into our closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you and welcome back. So, oh, okay, we're not ready yet.
Yes, certification of a closed session, whereas the school board of the city of Newport News has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board such that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Newport News School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
There a second for the motion?
I second.
Thank you. So, motion forwarded by Vice Chair Law and seconded by Dr. Terry Best. Any discussion? Thank you. Ms. Buffalo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best?
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Amon?
Rebecca Amon, four.
Mr. Brown?
Douglas Brown, four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right, thank you. So, now I believe that there is, we do have a matter of appointment, personnel appointment, and so with, is there a motion from the floor to, in regards to personnel appointments?
Motion to approve the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Lisa Searls Law, second that motion.
Thank you. Motion presented by Mr. Hunter and seconded by Lisa Searls Law. Any discussion on the matter of the personnel appointments? All right. Ms. Buffalo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ely?
John Ely, four.
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best?
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Amon?
Rebecca Amon, four.
Mr. Brown?
Douglas Brown, four. And so I believe that there is a question of procedure.
Sir, since the names of the appointments were not mentioned in the motion, it would be appropriate for me to introduce the appointees following the vote.
Thank you. So, yes, Dr. Parker, would you introduce the appointees and for these positions?
Okay. And Ms. Buffalo, you've called the roll for the vote?
Yes, seven zero, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to introduce Mr. Wade Beverly as the new Executive Director of Plant and Custodial Services. Prior to coming to Newport News Public Schools, Mr. Beverly served 15 years in the US Navy, and he has served a total of 26 years in Newport News Public Schools. He is moving from an active role to the, to the formal, formal title of Executive Director of Plant Services. And the second appointment was the new Assistant Principal at Passage Middle School. Mrs. Jonetta Vaughn was, Nate, was appointed as the new Assistant Principal. Ms. Vaughn began her career in Birdie County, North Carolina, as a mathematics teacher. She continued teaching mathematics when she moved to Virginia and worked for Suffolk Public Schools. After 12 years of teaching, Portsmouth Public Schools gave her an opportunity to be, become a math specialist and Assistant Principal. Mrs. Vaughn has since then returned to Suffolk in that capacity and is now looking for an opportunity to work in school administration again as an Assistant Principal in Newport News Public Schools. So, we are fortunate and lucky to have her join our team and look forward to meeting her formally, and we make, Mr. Chairman, we may provide an opportunity at the, at an upcoming board member to let those individuals can introduce themselves formally to the board.
Wonderful. Look forward to seeing them and hopefully their families as well. So, thank you, Dr. Parker, for those, for those appointments. With that, that concludes the business of the school board for today. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 20th and look forward to seeing you all then.